You have five present.
We do have a quorum, just for clarity for the listening public. This meeting is called to order. Basically Chair Avant is absent this evening due to a personal commitment. And Vice Chair Love had requested leave from having to conduct the meeting. And Chair Pro Tim for the work session is determined by policy. So if the Chairman and Vice Chairman are absent or unable to conduct the meeting, a quorum is present, which it is, the ranking members present in terms of continuous service on the board shall preside. As one of the ranking members of continuing service Chair Avant asked me to chair the meeting. And if there is no objection, I will act as Chair Pro Tim. There being no objection, I will chair the meeting. And Ms. Anthony has already called the roll. And a quorum has been established. The next is the pledge of, stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. During this moment of silence, please remember to keep in your thoughts the students, faculty, and families who were impacted by the school shooting in Texas. And also Board Member Love and her family on the loss of her mother.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. The question is now on the approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda? I will recognize lights up Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few items we'd like to add. There's an item, I think after we have the documents for the Central Nutrition Center demolition. There's a youth violence prevention initiative that we have some contracts, I guess, and finally resolves that correct Chief Darlin. Head Start, cost of living adjustment. I think that Ms. Jones spoke with the Head Start representatives and we need to discuss that. And there's an amended resolution approving SCS Board Member Strategic Funds allocation for, I guess, February 2018. And then I guess some housekeeping. Item 7.17, the name should be 2018-19 Proposed Budget Approval. And 7.18 should be FY 2018-19 Capital Projects Request.
I'll recognize any additional lights for additions to the agenda.
I'm sorry to manage it. Just one more. I think there was an item for some funding for the Bear Building, for a change order for the ADA compliance and for the...
Base two environmental.
Base two environmental.
There being no additional lights indicating a desire to amend the agenda, we're now ready to vote. Roll call, please.
Board Member Caldwell.
Aye.
Board Member Orville. Board Member Woods.
Aye.
Board Member Love.
Aye.
Board Member McCormick.
Aye.
Board Member Jones.
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs. Board Member Cornell. Board Chair Avant. You have five ayes.
Board Member Caldwell.
I just have a quick question. So I know we made additions. I saw some of them, I think, already on the, you know, the screen we're looking at. So we don't need to get out and come back in. Nothing's being updated from what was already there.
I think it's our...
I might need to refresh your browser because if anything has been, I think a refreshed browser will bring everything up. Has everything been uploaded staff? All of the announcements by Superintendent Bear had not been? Has it been now? It still has not been. So is it going to be or are we going to get a hard copy? That's at the end, but that's the one that has not been added so far. They're in the process of adding it. Were there any other questions? We already voted? Okay. I got sidetracked. Next number five is the Chairman's report. Obviously, I'm not the Chair and I'm not prepared for a report. Other than, I'm going through a little short PTSD here, but other than that, I'll just move to item number six and let the Chair submit a report next week. That's Superintendent's report.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just very quickly, I'm having a really great graduation season. I know many of you attended graduations. Had an opportunity to give the commencement address at Douglas last night. Myself and Ms. Phelan and Rod Richmond. And tomorrow, I have the distinct honor of addressing the fifth grade promotion class at Ottawa, which my daughter will be leaving. So if you want to see the Superintendent cry, I'll be doing that tomorrow morning at 10:00. I think on this report, what we have, I know that the report regarding my evaluation is a part of my report, I'm going to ask Meg to come forward. And if it pleases the Board, the KPIs, which we were going to do, since there's, I know a lot of Board Members are out doing different things, would like to move that to the regular business meeting. So we have more people in attendance, if that's okay with the Board.
Is there Board Member Caldwell that recognized your light?
I would just tell you Superintendent, save some tears for middle school and high school.
Testing. There we go. Aisha, should we go ahead and hand those copies out? Good evening. Thank you all so much for having me tonight. The Shelby County School Board of Education completed their annual performance evaluation of Superintendent Dorsey Hobson for the school year 2016-2017. Let's see if we can... Aisha, can you help me get to the... There we go. So, as I said, the Shelby County School Board completed their annual performance evaluation of Superintendent Hobson for the school year 2016-17. The instrument that was used was a survey instrument that was the same instrument used for the prior year in 2015-16. All nine school Board Members were invited to complete the evaluation. Eight of nine did complete the evaluation. And also as part of the evaluation Superintendent Hobson submitted a progress report for the year detailing his progress on key indicators. In terms of the methodology for the evaluation, there were three parts to the evaluation. The first was an assessment of the primary areas of responsibility. And those included board relationships, community relationships, staff and personnel relationships, facilities and finance, vision and student achievement. And then the second part was to rate annual performance objectives, progress on those. Those included five performance objectives. The first was to ensure that there is continuous improvement plan for students and growth achievement. The second, ensure an effective human capital and development process is in place. The third, develop a comprehensive plan of professional learning for instructional staff. The fourth, assess the overall technology needs of the district and develop a comprehensive plan to address current and anticipatory technology needs. And the fifth, evaluate the organizational structure of the central office and reorganize as necessary to achieve maximum effectiveness. The rating scale that was used was a five-point Likert scale, a one being significantly below expectations and a score of five being significantly above expectations. In summary, this is our executive summary. Superintendent Hobson's overall score was a 3.56, which is an at to above expectations. I think it's worth noting that Hobson was rated at or above expectations in 43 out of 46 total evaluation categories, which is very strong. In the sixth area is a primary responsibility. He scored the highest in the category of community relationships with a 4.31, which is above to significantly above expectations. The low score in that section was staff and personnel relationships with a score of 3.38, which again was at to above expectations. In the annual performance objective section, Hobson scored a 3.43, which is at to above expectations on two performance objectives, number one and also number three. And then the low score there was a 3.14, which is at expectations, performance objective number two, which is to ensure that an effective human capital development process is in place. Just to take you through the results, this is the section one. So these are the primary areas of responsibility in terms of board relationships. You can see the scores on each of the five questions under this category. Some of the comments from the Board Members centered around one of the strengths, that board communication has improved in this category. But still some work to do on communicating new hires and consultants to the board in a more timely manner. And that accounts for the 2.75 score under number two. In the next category, community relationships, the overall score was a 4.31, which is above to significantly above expectations. And folks cited his willingness to listen and implement suggestions as a strength. Staff and personnel relationships, overall score was a 3.38. Comments included, develop a process for evaluating all central staff, strengthen the cabinet, and provide more timely training and monitor for participation. And that accounts for the score in number five there, 2.86, around organizing a planned program of staff evaluation. Under facilities and finance, 4.05 was the score above to significantly above expectations. The Board Members noted that the organization is currently in strong financial standing, though some contracts have been open-ended and more money has been spent than the Board agreed. That's in some cases. Under vision, the overall score was a 3.68 with comments around developing a strategic plan to gather community support and increased focus on implementation. And under student achievement, folks noted that he's certainly committed to destination 2025 goals. He's making strides on the academic plan and they appreciated his expanded knowledge of the curriculum. In part two, on the annual performance objectives, on performance objective one, 3.43, ensure there is a continuous improvement plan for student achievement and growth. That's at to above expectations. On number two, ensure an effective human capital and development process is in place, 3.14. That was probably one of the lower scores in terms of these objectives. Performance objective number three, develop a comprehensive plan of professional learning for the instructional staff, 3.43, at to above expectations. Performance objective number four, assess the overall technology needs of the district and develop a comprehensive plan to address current and anticipatory technology needs. This was a 3.31, at to above expectations. And on performance objective number five, evaluate the organizational structure of the central office and reorganize as necessary to achieve maximum effectiveness, 3.21. And note the low score under the reorganization of personnel, which we heard some comments about. Part three of the evaluation was an opportunity for Board Members to comment, open-ended, on strengths and areas for development for the Superintendent. This is a list of some of the comments that were made. Just to call out a few to your attention. Certainly has the right temperament for the job, is very committed to Shelby County Schools and destination 2025 goals. Ensures strong financial position of the district, has improved board communication, and has made progress on the academic plan. All those were strong. Part three, under opportunities, Board Members again had the ability to comment here and they cited the following as opportunities. There was a lot of focus around implementation as an area for opportunity, continuing to shift the culture of Shelby County Schools, building stronger community partnerships to connect to the majority of SCS parents, succession planning for key roles and continued professional development, and certainly increasing the percentage of contracts awarded to local and minority businesses. And that concludes the evaluation.
Board Member Woods.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to make a few quick comments. First of all, I want to thank Meg Crosby and People Cap for leading this process. And also Board Member McCormick for leading the evaluation committee. Just want to state Superintendent, prior to me sliding out to go to my daughter's eighth grade graduation, I think that this report hits on the things that we as a Board know that you're good at and also the things that we need to continue to work on to improve the district. I really have listened to Board Member Love speak emphatically about improved communication as well as having a stronger evaluation instrument. And to see both those things, improved communication as a strength and a strong evaluation tool as an opportunity are definitely two things that I'll continue to be eyeing and want to support you on both of those. So again, thank you, Meg, for your work. Appreciate it.
Board Member McCormick.
I too want to give you my thanks for working with you. It was a pleasure. You made the process easy, at least easy on my part. I'm sure on your end, working with nine Board Members is a little like herding cats. I am extremely pleased at the results of our Superintendent. It confirms what I know from our working relationship, that you are the right person for this job. You have a great mindset on how you approach things. Are you perfect? No, but you're pretty close, I think. And I'm pleased with the way that the process went. And I look forward to having even a better evaluation the next go-round.
Seeing no additional lights, we've... Yes, we do. Board Member Love.
I also want to thank you for taking the time out for this evaluation tool. And I think that, you know, the strengths and the things that we need to work on Superintendent, he knows about those things. And I'm sure that he will continue to work on them. So thank you and thank you Superintendent.
So I did think the process, Mr. Superintendent, was easy. I did share with Ms. Crosby, is it? The process and how questions were structured in that they, as a Board Member, there were things I wanted to say. A lot of things were compounded, but it was, you had to either agree or not agree. So I did share with her my concerns. So I'm not concerned or disappointed with the results. But I shared with her the way the questions were structured. And I think this is our process. And so we did have a conversation about perhaps having a little bit more leeway to speak about individual topics other than them being lumped into a category. That was my only concern. But that was ours, it's not yours. And I commend you for the job well done.
Well, I just thank you, Madam Chair. I thank the whole Board. You know, we have accomplished a lot over the last five years, but we've got a long way to go. And I just appreciate you guys. I appreciate your thoughtfulness. I appreciate your pushing. I appreciate the staff. You know, I know they're all committed. And just look forward to an even better 2019.
I see no additional lights. We'll move to staff. We are now on the agenda of staff.
Just one more item, just to update the Board. As the Board knows that Tennessee-ready test results were problematic to say the least, we will be recommending that none of those test results be calculated into our student results. So just want to give the Board a heads-up on that. We'll make the formal recommendation on Tuesday because I believe the policy requires 10%, so we need the Board, I guess, to waive the policy and accept our recommendation. Is that right, Mr. Leon?
Actually, the state law also says that the state has to get us the results within five days of school closing. They didn't meet that deadline, so the Board doesn't need to take action. And the administration can go ahead and just count the test results as 0%.
So my question is something I read in terms of they don't have to count, but they can't do any harm. And I guess if we do nothing, it doesn't, it leaves everyone where they were. But was there any language about if it was beneficial to count and how we treated that? It was just saying, do no harm? It wasn't, I think initially there was some language that said, you don't count them, but if it's beneficial, if it would improve a score, then you'd have that option.
I believe that was for the teachers.
Yeah, I don't believe it's for the students.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm jumping ahead. Okay. We're now on the agenda of staff action items. The first item on the agenda is a recommendation for teacher tenure. And it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the Director of Schools' list of teachers changing in career status from non-tenured to permanent tenure status. This change in status will not prevent a teacher from being fired or discharged at any time for good cause. And I would add, it's my understanding, but it would ensure that they have certain due process rights that must be honored before they would be disciplined on that goal. Okay.
Madam Chair, I think that there's, should have the list of all the teachers attached. And essentially, if you are, teach for five consecutive years and have a satisfactory performance evaluation, then you are eligible for tenure. And I think you hit the nail on the head, Ms. Jones, that if you have tenure at the end of the year, you can't be dismissed without cause. So this provides another level of protection for our teachers.
Seeing no lights, we'll move to item 7.2, Eureka Math Curriculum Printing Materials.
Yes, this is for, to complete the module set with our Eureka Math. And I think it's just really for some printing for the... Ms. Charles, can you help me out?
For printing for workbook B materials. Workbook B materials are exit tickets, fluency's, and assessment. So it is a printing for workbook B materials.
So, and that amount for the listing public is 432,741.60.
430...
I'm sorry. 432,000. 400 million, no. The only question I had was the timing of this in terms of being able to get the material in time for the start of school. What is the timeline for this?
The material, so in the bid that we did, we did put a timeline in there to have the materials printed this summer. So they will be in the schools this summer.
So when are they supposed to get to us?
I'm sorry.
They'll be in the schools this summer?
This summer. We will deliver them, so they will be in the schools prior to the beginning of the start of school.
If there's any problem or change with that, I would, as a Board Member, we would like to be notified.
Yes, definitely.
I think Ms. Jones, what we'll do, just to double-check is, we'll also notify the Board when they are delivered this summer.
We will definitely do that also, yes.
Item number 7.3, Power School Group LLC Annual Management Contract.
Yes, Madam Chair. So the Board knows we use Power School as our primary student record software. And it's just for the annual maintenance every year.
And that amount is 719,463.60.
That's correct.
Where are we getting these 60 cents from? I don't see any lights, so we'll move that to the consent agenda for next week. Item 7.4, Palo Alto Security Firewall. The amount is 19,000, well...
It's 100 and...
I think there was an additional purchase.
Yeah, I think it's the total.
From our original amount.
Exactly. It's 158,106. Can you, Mr. Williams, just explain what that's for?
Yes, good evening. Yes, we are continuing to, as we've discussed, to build up our defenses against security for security purposes. And what we're doing with the Palo Alto, we already have one in existence. And because of the amount of traffic we are seeing coming across our network, we needed to beef up that so we're not a single source, a single, a single box to support the effort. So we're duplicating it, if that makes sense. It's part of our overall security strategy. And it's one we have in place already.
Seeing no lights for questions, we'll move that item to next week's consent agenda. The next item is 7.5, Complete Serving Lines for various school cafeterias. I think there is a recommendation for federal and award to Federal Equipment Dealers, Inc. for 179,894. And another award to Hotel and Restaurant Supply, 52,287.10 for a total of 232,181.10. Are there any lights or, Mr. Superintendent?
It's just serving lines.
We'll move that item then to the consent agenda next week. Item 7.2, Contract Amendment to Increase the Amount for CBIZ Evaluation Group. And this is to change, to increase the scope of work. That increased amount is 51,975.
Yes, Madam Chair. This is essentially for our asset management and tracking. As the Board knows, we've had some outside help from CBIZ. And I think that the manpower that they need is increased a little bit. But if you could comment on that, Ms. Phelan.
So the, there were a large amount of assets that didn't have barcodes on them. And that changed the labor requirement for the vendor to manually enter in those, the data for those assets. And so they've come back requesting the change order because their labor hours have gone up 30%. And we really do want them to, you know, track and enter in all the barcodes and information for all the assets that they're identifying. So it's a good, it's a good thing. It's unfortunate we have to pay more, but actually it's better for our asset management program.
Board Member Caldwell.
Yes, so particularly my question is, I know we've done a couple of inventories and that now we have things that don't have barcodes on them. Do you, do you know how that happened so we can make sure it doesn't happen again? And should our expectations be that everything that we're going to try to track has a barcode on it going forward?
Yes. And I think that's, as part of the discussions around the Council of Great City Schools' improvements in terms of improving our ability to track and manage the assets, that everything will be inducted into the program and require a code going forward. So we're, now we're just trying to close out items from the past with entering in all the information as a result of the physical audit that we're doing across the district.
Are you comfortable that these aren't items that have been received in the district in the last one or two years? I mean, so you're, you're saying that your system is tight now that anything that comes in will have a barcode on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I think to that point, Mr. Caldwell, when I probed, I think it did appear that all these were like older things. But, you know, we obviously have been barcoded. But, you know, we obviously have been barcoding newer things the last three or four years.
CNO lights, we'll move that item to the consent agenda. Item 7 point, action item 7.7, Contract Amendment for Thompson Engineering Design Service. This is an additional addition to the original contract amount. The new addition is 90,000, which would bring the total amount to 785,921 dollars and 80 cents. Mr. Superintendent or lights for that, for discussion?
Ms. Faylor, can you just?
Sure. So this is related to Hamilton High School. And we required some more design-related service that exceeded the reimbursable amount of 63,000. We needed 90,000 worth of additional design services. And so we're bringing it, to be transparent, we're bringing it to the board to ask for that approval with the understanding that the reimbursable fees, although shown, won't be used. So we couldn't cover the additional 90 with reimbursable. That's why I'm bringing it to you for approval. And we know we won't use the 63,000 that was identified for reimbursable. Therefore, the change really is only 26,000.
CNO lights, we'll move that item to next week's consent agenda. Action item 7.8, Direct from Manufacturer Food Bid. That is food service equipment from the Central Nutrition Fund. I think the amount is 4,283,996.
Ms. Jones, they're food items.
Okay, they're food items, okay. But I was looking at the amount, I misspoke. 4,283,996 dollars and 45 cents. And Mr. Superintendent or lights from board members? No lights, we'll move that forward. 7.9 is a rescinding of a previous award for roof replacement at Riverview K8 School.
Yeah, essentially what happened, Madam Chair, is that we made an award, and then the contractor notified us that they could not perform. And so we went back to the bid and selected the number two vendor. There are some issues, we believe, and I'll just ask Ms. Irvin to brief the board confidentially because there is a price increase from the first vendor to the second that couldn't perform.
So that's going to be during a different session, so we'll. I see no lights on 7.9 in terms of the recommendation to rescind. So we'll move to 7.10, Roof Replacement Riverview K8, a new award.
That's correct, this is the next vendor that was in the process to put the roof on the Riverview K8 School.
Board Member Love?
Just a question, Superintendent, are there any more projects that the former vendor was already working on?
Ms. Faylor?
JD Ventures Roofing, no.
I see no further lights, we'll move that to next week's consent agenda. 7.11, A May 2018 Budget Amendment. Mr. Johnson or Superintendent?
Mr. Johnson? So this is the May Board of Amendment for the year. This will be our final one. And there's, it's really straightforward. One is that we are doing alignment to ensure that we have the final budget for our general fund and making sure that it meets the state requirements. So that's one component. And the second component is related to our federal funds to include the new grant that the district received in terms of Gear Up. And I believe that Kingsbury High, Kingsbury Middle, and Tress will, are, will be the schools that benefit from this grant. It's a six-year grant for 881,000 dollars. And the first installment of that grant is 112,000 dollars. So we're including that, that as part of the budget. The grant actually starts in May, so which is why we're including it. Let me be sure, I'm sorry, the grant actually starts in June, which is why we're including as part of this year's budget to allow some spending of that grant.
So, thank you, Mr. Johnson. So since those are my three schools, I was interested to know more details about what that grant would allow.
Yeah. Happy to, and just to give some context for, for the grant. So this is an opportunity to really, it's designed to provide school students the ability to gain more knowledge and preparation for college. So there will be a cohort of students, including eighth graders, who are enrolled in Kingsbury Middle and Kingsbury Tress, well, High School. And the students will receive individualized support, advocacy in terms of completing their K-12 education, and also support around applying to post-secondary institutions. It'll include a, one instructional facilitator, school supplies, college readiness activities, including college field trips, and then, and include parent awareness and education around college readiness.
Thank you. Board Member Love, have you recognized?
Just a question, with the Gear Up Grant and the students who will be selected, are there any other programs that these students will be in? Leadership Memphis, maybe the school has a partnership? Because I think that when we, when we want to compare the data to see how effective these programs are, sometimes that data is kind of skewed if it's, if the children are receiving support from different programs. So will this be the only program that the children will be involved in? Or will there be different programs? Or we don't know that question, we don't know the answer yet.
Yeah, let me not say that it's the only program, but what we can do is, we can follow up with Kingsbury High in terms of what other programs do they have outside of this to support the college readiness?
Okay. And Superintendent, I know that there are other programs that our high schools are involved in. So when we think about what programs or what, what's actually working for our children, have we just, have we like segregated that data to show? Because I know Leadership Memphis does something, and they have a cohort of students. How successful are they, or what is their, you know, what is their track record? You know, to ensure that these programs are working? And if we need to advocate for more funds for these different programs, making sure we have that data.
I think, Ms. Love, we've done it for some, but not all. And I can get you the data. I think that the programs that we have a regular attendance, like the Gear Up and those kinds of things, we do have, we do track it, but I'll get you the information.
So is this a consent item, or can we go on the consent agenda, or you want to? Okay, so we'll move that forward. 7.12 is a recommendation to approve the third quarter fiscal year 2017-18 financial statements.
Mr. Johnson? Absolutely. So we shared the financial statements in the beginning of May with the board and the Audit, Budget, and Finance Committee. As an extra step for the, our Shelby County, we're presenting this to the entire board as acceptance of the financial statements.
Board Member Caldwell?
I just have a question, you know, you cited at the last part about the June 13, 2017 County Commission Resolution that talks about us having to, they'll write off all appropriate allocations. So are we on target not to have any money removed from us? Have we gotten everything that we need to have done in terms of that?
So I can, I can give a little context behind this. So I share with the board, sorry, I'm just looking for. Can't find it. But I share with the board in terms of our, our spending. I will say that spending has picked up. So the last time we saw in terms of 18, 2018, was at the end of April, about spending near 3 million, a little bit over 3 million dollars. Since then, both the facilities team, we probably have received about close to 10 million dollars in payment requests, and they're still coming in. So I would say that spending has definitely picked up in the month of May, and we plan to kind of see that continue in June as well.
So if I, if I look at the numbers on that page at that point, it was like 13 million. So by the end of April, there was another 3 million off of that, I think. And so we're down to 10 million. And then I think you said there was 2 million that came in since, since, or roughly 8 million. And as you alluded to, these purchase orders or the commitments are coming in fast and furious, I hope.
Yeah, and I have the numbers in front of me. So I sent the email on May the 11th. So for 2016 appropriation, there was about, as the end of April 30th, there was about 12.3 uncommitted. For '17, there was about 6.6 uncommitted, and about 10.9 uncommitted as of the end of April. We had about 30, you know, for 2016, we had, we spent about 11.4, and we encumbered about 11.8. For 2017, we spent about 1.8 and encumbered 10 million. And then for '18, we spent about 3.6 and encumbered 36 million. And like I said, we have seen a pickup in terms of spending, you know, even within the last few weeks of, of May, so. And I'm happy to, to share that, that was, I believe, shared with all the board on May the 11th, but I'm happy to share that again.
Seeing no other lights, we'll move that item for consent next week. Item 7.13 is a recommendation, 800, 15,837 dollar request to, for camera service license and card access systems.
Thank you, Madam Chair, that's exactly what it is. I just want to also make the board aware that we are going through a assessment with the state even now as part of the money that the state made available to hardened schools. I think it was about 6 million dollars that we're eligible for. So we're going through that process now, and hopefully there'll be even more state dollars so we can continue to upgrade our school security.
CNO lights, we'll move that item to the consent agenda. 7.14 is a resolution approving the sale of potential stock held by Shelby County Board of Education. I think that we did receive a document explaining how we came in possession of this stock.
Yeah, I think you're right, Madam Chair. I think this was part of something that the auditor flagged last year.
That's, that's, that's correct, Superintendent Hopson. So this was part of one of the management comments that we received last year where there was a, we were, Memphis City Schools actually received stock in 2001 as part of potential insurance demunization. And the stocks were, were, were provided to the Memphis City Schools at the time as part of a potential corporate action, not a transaction that the school district made at that time. So what we have done has been going back to confirm that we received all of the dividends. We've gone back to review all the dividend statements. We've also confirmed that there's been no withdrawals or no fraudulent activities as well. And then I think the third part of the recommendation was that the district would take action towards liquidating the stocks as well. The, the stocks amount to about 560,000 dollars. So this is a resolution in order to approve the sale of the potential stocks held by the board.
Board Member Caldwell?
So if I remember correctly, we all of a sudden found some dividend income we couldn't account for. And then with further research, we found that the stock, and actually what they did was they were a mutual insurance company, and they just converted to a stock company. And I could see how that was probably, you know, just an electronic notification to somebody. And if they didn't know what to look for, they wouldn't have been able to find it. And I only wish we'd have sold it a little bit earlier.
Yes, so that's, that's absolutely right. And for a period of time, the information wasn't even coming directly to the district. So I mean, we had to do a lot of digging, but I think we have everything confirmed now.
I was going to say, unfortunately, we, we don't have any more of those sitting out there.
Seeing no other lights, we'll move this to next week's consent agenda. Item 7.15 is a resolution approving the acceptance of Archer Daniels Midland Common Stock Donation.
So, so this is really good news for the district. And I'd like to, I, I think there's a copy of this resolution that says anonymous. I would like to revise that to include the actual person's name. And we, we have his permission to use his name. So we had a private citizen who gave us a call wanting to make a donation to the school district and, in the form of stocks. So about 70, about 75 to 80,000 dollars worth of stocks of ADM shares he would like to provide the district unrestricted. His name is Daniel Case as well. And it was a very, very generous gift to the district. And we're not only asking to, one, accept these according to our policy on gift sponsorships and donation, but two, to also, once we do accept them, to also ask to liquidate those stocks as well.
Board Member Caldwell?
Yes, Mr. Case happens to live in my district, and he called me. And so I don't know if he'd called you first or what, but what came to mind to me is that we ought to advertise this somewhere on the website that, and, and you know, a lot of people use that as an estate planning strategy. So I would just try to get with communications and then possibly School C and have some, you know, marketing, one, where people can find out they can do that. And this is a great way to look, to get to start it. But I wouldn't, you know, I would hope that we can, you know, build on this and just make that, make sure it's not just a one-time occurrence, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I would hope that we would, within policy, and I don't know if there was any precedence for this, but show our, some type of expression to Mr. Case for his generosity. I'm not sure if that's something, I think, maybe. Resolution or plaque or whatever. I don't know what that is. I'll leave it to you, Mr. Superintendent, but I would like to have some tangible expression acknowledging our gratitude for this most generous gift.
Absolutely, absolutely we will.
Yes, Board Member Caldwell?
I would be glad to, you know, reach out to Mr. Case and see what, and then just propose, you know, come up with a resolution for the board to acknowledge it.
Okay.
If y'all will allow me to add it to the agenda next week.
Without objection? I don't see anyone objecting.
All right.
That you would be allowed to add it.
I'd like to talk to him for a second or so.
In that same vein, 7.16 is. In that same vein, seven point one six is the resolution approving the sale of the aforementioned Archer Daniel Midland Common Stock. Seeing no lights, we'll move that to the consent agenda. Seven point one seven is a two thousand and eighteen, nineteen proposed budget discussion.
So, Board Members, I asked Lynn just to, you know, as we kind of round third to head home towards this presentation next Wednesday. A few outstanding issues, and just want to make sure the board, um, you know, gives us some good direction. So I think the last time we presented, and what we've been presenting now in the community is about a twelve point seven, uh, million dollar gap. Uh, so wanna be sure that that's where the board wants to end up, and if not, expand it. And then also, I think there was a significant use of fund balance, wanna make sure the board is comfortable with that. And then I guess any other, uh, additions or discussions regarding the budget. Look forward to discussion.
So I'd have
Yeah, I guess, and for clarity, is this just for discussion, or are we gonna be asking for a vote next week? Okay, there would be a vote next week, Board Members. Yes, Mr. Johnson, proceed.
I apologize. So, I, I, at a very high level, I would just like to go over the budget. I know the, the board has, have seen it, but just wanted to make sure that the public and the board sees it just one last time. So our budget, the combined budget stands at one point three seven million dollars. The general fund budget is, I'm sorry, one point three seven billion dollars. The general fund budget is about a billion dollars, um, which makes up seventy-seven percent of that co- combined budget. I provided each of you with, uh, a one-pager of the general fund budget and also the investments as well. The investment list, um, is about sixty-six million dollars of investments. Forty-nine, that, that is, there's a recommendation for forty-nine million use of fund balance. Thirty-eight of that is towards the investment. Eight million is for the ERP, and three million is for OPEP, which we, we typically have, leaving a funding gap of twelve point seven million. This budget includes, um, about eleven million for teachers' compensations, about thirty, um, for SROs, another eight million for CTE and professional development for reading specialists, and also reading specialists in our, um, middle and high schools as well. And then thirty-five, um, new guidance counselors and behavior specialists. This is the, the combined budget of that one point three seven billion dollars. Each of the funds from the general fund to the capital, to the non-federal, to nutrition and federal as well. The non-capital, we'll, we'll talk about that as the next agenda item. This does not include the budget requests. It just includes what we're planning to carry over for next year, truly unspent funds that we have not spent, will carry forward for FY eighteen, nineteen. Here's a, a high-level view of the, the general fund's budget revenues as well. The two biggest are, are Shelby County revenues, and that includes property tax, will tax, sales tax, and then our Tennessee revenue, and the bulk of that is the BEP, um, as well. And then there's a, a breakdown of our expenses as well. Instruction makes up about half, forty-nine percent. Charter schools makes up another fourteen percent. And there are another, other, a, a number of other expenses that are part of that from instructional support, student support as well, that makes up the general fund budget of that one billion dollars. And then, um, you know, again, this gets to the point in terms of where we're investing our dollars. Um, the, the sixty-six million dollars, so we're investing those dollars in school safety and learning environments. We're investing those dollars in family and community engagement. We are also making sure that we're efficient and we're building internal capacity, whether that is dealing with, um, HR or dealing with, um, facility management as well. Uh, we are investing in early learning as well in terms of, um, the expansion of the pre-K and also ensuring that we have reading specialists at each of our elementary schools. We're also investing in high-quality instruction and improving, um, achievement, and that's evident in terms of, um, teacher salary increases. Also investing in our advanced instruction as well. And then, and investing in college and career readiness with CTE as well.
Board Member Love.
So I have a, a couple of questions. So what is the total that we're asking for? The total amount that we're asking for?
So for, for the county, we're asking for twelve point seven million dollars. That is our funding gap. What that means, what the, so that's how much Shelby County needs. Um, it's twelve point seven million. What, because we have the ADA, uh, we get a, a portion of what the county gives us and all the other school district. They would need to increase the education fund by sixteen point three million dollars. So they need to increase, and we'll get twelve point seven of that. Already, I believe they have proposed, the, the mayor, let's roll, has proposed seven point eight million dollars increase in terms of the education fund. So a little bit, a, a little under halfway there already.
So we're only asking for twelve point seven?
Why?
I said, so we're only asking for twelve point seven?
Well, I think that's part of the, the discussion. I think our, our recommendation is, um, twelve point seven for, but I think it's part of the discussion of whether we ask for that or we ask for more, but our recommendation is twelve point seven.
Okay, and I'll just ask, I think, what I asked you last year. If we know that the need is high, why are we not asking for what we need and let them tell us no? You know, we often say that we have this tremendous need, but we never ask for what we need. And, you know, I'm just gonna keep asking it every year until we do something different. And I, you may not have that answer now, and I think that's on the board to make that request. But what I also want to know is, um, in this budget, I know we've seen everything, but I actually, uh, spoke with some principals who are not on the priority list. They're not in I-zone, they're not in E-zone, they're not optional. How are we supporting them? Because, um, I know that they say, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the oil, but these are principals that are not squeaking, um, but they need support. So when we talk about supporting our schools, um, not the I-zone, not the priority, not the optional, but the schools were just there. You know, so how, how are we supporting them? And also, has there been any conversation, or will there be conversation in the future to assist our principals who have schools with some sort of assistant principal? Or, um, more help, because what I do know is, um, although they may have other people in the building, if they are busy doing something, and the district requires the principals to be at these meetings or different things like that, there's nobody in that building that can really spend the time of running that building. So, uh, Superintendent, I do think that that's something that
So
the district needs to, uh, explore.
So, yes, I, I think a lot about the schools that I don't hear from, um, constantly. Um, so Dr. Yilin and I, we've been in discussion in terms of working with schools to make sure that they're using their resources more effectively, right? And I think part of that is seeing whether we can, whether there are, um, the ability to think about how to have a assistant principal. Think about how to have other social support roles that might benefit, especially for our smaller schools. I know our ele- small elementaries, it takes a lot for them to get an assistant principal. It takes a lot for them to get some of the other support that some of the larger elementaries. So we are, we are thinking about that as well. I think the other part is, is that we've been thinking about how to become more equitable in terms of the funding and making sure that we're fair, um, and not just treating all schools the same, but understanding that even a school may have the same popu- may have the same number of kids, the population may be different, and they're gonna require different resources to support those kids as well. So yes, we're, we're driving towards that.
And I think too, Ms. Love, part of the, some of the creative things that some of the people have been doing with the student-based budget and is, you know, instead of, because, you know, we have this formula. So I know there's some principals who say, all right, well, I wanna AP now instead of a this or that. So I think that'll continue to emerge. And I think that there's also the, the process, like when we go through our staff adjustments and all that. Principals also have opportunity to say, hey, here's some additional needs that I have. And then I think that with Dr. Ray, Dr. Yilin, they have the ILDs that go through a committee. So we are always trying to figure out, you know, as best we can, what we have, how to give people to support their need. And I think just finally, Ms. Love, on your comment around the, the, uh, the needs. I mean, I agree, I think that when we first did this, the list of proposed investments was what, about a hundred and twenty million dollars? Land is at where we started. And so I think that, you know, our purpose was not to say, you know, this is it. I think we just tried to come down and say, I hear something. And then, you know, certainly, at the board's direction, you know, we'll go advocate for whatever the majority of the board wants to advocate for.
Just to let the board members know that the county, um, they do have a surplus, FYI.
Board Member Caldwell.
So, um, we, before we came down here, we had a meeting in the Academic Achievement Committee. And so we're looking to buy, um, probably close to seven million dollars in science textbooks, which, uh, we have not bought since two thousand and nine. And when I asked the question of if it was in the current budget ask, and it's not, so I would ask that that be added to that. I would also ask you to get a list, because later on, we, you know, and I, and if you think we need to call an audit budget and finance committee meeting to try to go over this before next Tuesday, I'm glad to do that, or some way relay the information. But I would like a list of things that if we were to spend down some of our fund balance, one-time, uh, you know, spend expenditures, or something that, that would leverage the assets that the district has now, that, that we get your best thinking about that.
So we have the list. So non-recurring is about, um, fourteen point five million dollars. Re-occurring is about fifty-one point eight million dollars. We can provide that list to the, to the board, the team has, um, have that. So we'll send it out today, um, that list. But the majority of the things that are within the budget, um, are re-occurring, are re-occurring things. But we're, we're happy to, to share that list.
So, um, so I know, um, that you're very concerned about, um, you know, things that unexpected occurrences and, and wanting to have that fund balance. I'm a little concerned that that big a percentage of what we're spending is, is basically one-time money for recurring expenses. So, uh, I, I think, you know, that we need to look at that carefully. Um, I think some other things may be justified, but it, but I would ask that maybe we work together to try to take some of those things off, out of the fund balance, and then actually allocate those to things that are one-time or are leveraged, you know, investments that leverage the assets of the district. Because what are we gonna do next year? And, and
Yeah, so, I mean, Board Member Caldwell, I think you hit the, the issue on the head, and you, you've said it perfectly. Like, that is one of my biggest concerns when it comes to fund balance, is the sustainability of the use of the fund balance. Typically, fund balance is used for, um, you know, whether it's to pilot something, or innovation, or non-recurring expenses. When we're using fund balance to, um, to sustain programmatic things, we just have to be very careful on how long we can do that. So, um, our, our funding is our, our funding. Um, I think we've been, um, probably less conservative than we've been in the past. We've also seen a lot of improvement in terms of our enrollment. Uh, we're benefiting from the increase that we're receiving, uh, from the BEP rate as well. So I, I, I don't see our funding particularly increasing, or at least increasing dramatically, and how we're supplementing the other additional costs is through the use of fund balance.
So, I think you just made my case for a bigger ask of recurring revenue. And so, um, and the, the county commission is not shy about telling us no or taking money back. So, I would encourage you, you know, you know, and the superintendent, you know, we're, um, just to give it some thought, and let's have an honest discussion about it. Because when I think about every year, there's another graduating class of seniors that we're not gonna be able to, 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 you know, improve their circumstances from that point on. Or a group of kids that just got, got to school behind, and that, and our experience has shown that they are, they stay behind. So that, that's the kind of sense of urgency that I think we ought to be, one, not be afraid, no, not afraid's the wrong word, that we ought to ask for what we need, and then at the same time, sh- show, make, make a good faith effort to spend as much as we can, uh, um, judiciously, or, you know, and, and I want to compliment you for, you know, back up and a com- a compliment you, because I know part of the reason this ask is not as big, and that we have been able to, to make it the last few years, is, is by being prudent and, and managing that. But I also think, one of the things that other board members have talked about is that one thing that would drive revenues is recruitment and more students. So to the extent that we have fund balance that could be used to get the word out, or if we have fund balance that could be a one-time thing to help the communities be engaged, I think those, that would, those are the types of things that I think would be well justified for one-time spending.
So I, I would say, board, I mean, I think at this point, I mean, i- if, if the board tells us that this is the amount we want to ask for, we can certainly justify that. So I mean, like, you know, we're not arguing and saying, no, this is it. I don't think the county could give us enough money to meet our needs, I mean, simply because our needs are so great. So we know that, you know, I, I think to your point, Ms. Caldwell, that is, that is just modest. You know, that is just us giving our, you know, sharpening our pencil. But, you know, we could ask for fifty million dollars and it not be enough. So I, I, I think at this point, whenever the board gives us direction and says, hey, we should be this or should be that, we can go back and go back to that list of, um, of investments that are all compelling and bring them back to you and say, hey, here's what we would propose to use it on.
Right, and I realize that, that, you know, that, that, that we're on the same team. So, so anything I said was not, you know, uh, uh, you know, I don't think derogatory about what you've done. I think you've done something, you've, what you've done, you know, you're starting out at a good place. But, um, when Mr. Kennedy says this is the budgeted amount in a county commission meeting, that is a number that he put on a piece of paper. That has no correlation, really, to the amount of excess revenues they have in. And so that's not a hard, firm number. And so I think we, we ought to push them to try to find out. Obviously, it's not just my vote, it has to be a consensus of the board, but I would encourage board members to think about that. But what we really need from y'all is your best thinking about where that money should go. Because y'all are the ones that, that, that go through a budget cycle, and you see during the course of a year those things that, gosh, I wish we had been able to do this. Or you, you know, I'm sure they're principals, and some you hear from and some you don't, and some that may be very, um, diplomatic about what they ask for. But I, I, I think if we, you know, if, if we don't try, how will we know? So.
Board Member Love, second time, I think it is.
Yeah, another question. Superintendent, when, um, the district decided to, I think, uh, put a cap on the number of students needed for an assistant principal, um, was there conversation about how many students in the school had IEPs? You know, because I'm, I'm thinking about, um,
So, so can you respond to that about the, the IEP?
Yes, uh, Board Member Love, we always make exceptions for, um, a high number of, uh, individualized educ- Yes, uh, Board Member Love, we always make exceptions for, um, a high number of, uh, individualized education plans, yes. So what tends to happen is, um, principals, they submit, uh, a plan or they say, hey, have you considered that we have this number? And the team convenes and usually they'll get that, um, exception.
And I think, I think too, Ms. Love, just some context though, just in all candid. Like, I remember, I'm thinking back in two thousand and eight, when we were Memphis City Schools and they pulled the funding. You know, like, then they started...
Can I finish answering my question, because I'm on time?
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
So, um, does every school have a sped advisor?
Yes, every school has a sped advisor that is provided by the district, yes, through our special education department.
And then I guess what you can send to me, um, in an email is, when you say you look at the number, what, what is that number? What is that number? Um, because I know there are a lot of smaller schools that don't have an assistant principal, but they have a high number of students who have an IEP. So what, what is that number? And then we can connect, so I can get more clarity around it.
We would love to.
I'm just trying to make sure that we're, that we're supporting our principals.
We, we would love to, and we'll get you that number along with the disabilities that are inside the school as well.
And, and we can, Ms. Love, I mean, uh, the, the formula got to where it was. I mean, just quite frankly, in two thousand and eight, when the money went away, just trying to adjust the cost. So we could make the formula, we know the formula is very, very, um, you know, thin. I mean, so, you know, that may be an area where if you ask for it, as I'm, I'm sure that there probably are, you know, dirty schools that, you know, if we're really honest, could really benefit from having an AP or an extra administrative person. So, and that formula is just something that we control ourselves.
So I guess I would just, um, ask that you work with your team to design what that would look like and what, um, I guess what criterias would go into place, um, for that, yeah.
Because what, what is, what is it, I guess, the, the formula now for an AP is with? Five fifty. So I guess we could go in and look and see if that were, I mean, like, I'd be curious to know, like, you know, how many schools have four ninety, you know, or whatever the number is. You know, because they're really just a number we pick to, to budget work, yeah.
Yeah, yes, we, we can definitely do that. And, um, Dr. Ray is absolutely right. So for, for middle and high is, is one to, um, is one to six hundred and fifty. And then when we start to get into elementary is around five hundred and fifty. I think the work that Dr. Ray and Dr. Waileau has been doing is looking into schools, their plans and their design to see how we can create more time, space, uh, resources to actually free up, to allow for social and emotional support and also for more administrative support, whether that's AP or, or administrative support as well.
Board member Caldwell.
It's, uh, nice to have you back as chair. I realize this is my second time, I'm using up my two minutes, so I'll make it quick. Um, but, but I would, I would also encourage you, um, you know, uh, to think about things like, I know Lynn, you and I have talked about that we're, um, a community, um, feeding, we, we qualify for, for food to go home with the kids all summer. And I think that would be a dual recruitment tool. And, um, it, you know, if, if we were able to go out and reach that, you know, or at least have the money to plan that, um, I think that would be money well spent and we could, we could pilot it and we could see what that would do in terms of, uh, of helping our enrollment. But it, but even if it didn't, it helps the, the, the families and the students in the building. Because I know we've all talked about sometimes that, um, and I heard you say this, that the breakfast and the lunch they get, um, in, in the schools, sometimes are the only meals they get. So I would ask us to push that envelope. And if you need to have a well-thought-out plan, then, then I would use some fund balance to plan what that structure would look like, if it, if it's not available from the central nutrition money as well.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll definitely work with, um, Beth's team in terms of nutrition service, in terms of the allowability of things. I think the one thing that, the one benefit of ESSA that really excites me is that the team is kind of doing a audit in the inventory of, of ESSA, of the grants that we have under ESSA, but all of our grants, to really see whether we're pushing the envelope in terms of what's allowable and what's not allowable. Are there things that we're not doing that is allowable by the grant that we could? Um, and we can, we'll do the same for nutrition as well, to see, are there things that we could be doing more of, um, that the grant allows?
Okay, make this quick. But you also made me think that some money invested to, um, better pursue grants might pay for itself. If, how many people do we have that make gra- grant applications? And is it a structured program? And if that was increased, you know, taking some fund balance, because that could possibly allow us to receive more grants around the country or, or promote schools to ask for grants that they could get. So that, that is something that would pay back the dividend, I mean, that paid dividends to the...
I love the idea. So we, we have a couple of people at best who writes our grants and the team has been, you know, that's one area that I would love to double and increase. Um, I mean, we should try to apply for every grant that we could and we definitely try. But when you have one or two people, um, it's hard to do.
Thank you. Uh, so, Mr. Superintendent, just, um, a couple of things. I do, I was at the Academic Performance Committee meeting and I do think there is an ask for purchase of books that would be appropriate for us to add. Uh, I think that amount has been identified and, uh, I think that might be appropriate, or I would encourage us to add that amount to the twelve point seven net that we're asking for. Um, because that is something, I think, that is all agreed, even though we haven't voted, that that purchase needs to take place. So I think we need to include it in, in, uh, this month, if we haven't already.
Uh, we, we, we have a resolution in the waiting. So we'll upload a, a new resolution for the, the actual work session.
And then for some clarity around the, the, the conversation, so, um, I heard a number of things that were mentioned, all worthy things. So is the board directing and the superintendent to go back and revise the budget in all of those areas? Are we starting over, looking at what we're going to, the areas within the next week? And are we gonna need some interim meetings to hash all of this out? Because we're, we're one week out to making our presentation. And I heard a number of things that I think are worthy, but are not in the budget. So I'm just trying to, uh, give the, give me some clarity and the district some clarity and direction. From what I heard, we're talking about a substantial alteration to the budget to include all of the things that were mentioned and some discussion by the entire board, uh, within the next week. Is that what you're, is that what you're asking? Board member Love?
So I think what I'm asking is, I know that there were things that, um, Lynn stated that we need, but it's not included in this ask. So, um, I know that it's up to the board to decide on the amount. But if there are some things that, um, Lynn and superintendent already have, um, you know, I think that's worthy of discussion. If they're already discussing dealing with the principals, um, if that's something, you know, I know it's, we have to vote on this next week. So even if it's something that we can't do this budget, um, I'm really asking, you know, that we consider this for, not consider, we do it for next budget. Because I know this is some, some of these things are things that I've been asking for year after year after year. Uh, so even, you know, I'm not trying to put a hardship on you guys, but I know there are things that, uh, we really need to take care of. So I guess that's more so on the superintendent and, um, our CFO. Uh, what can you do? And if you can't, um, it needs to be done, uh, for next year, so, you know, that's...
Personally, just ask for, for more time, at least a, a year from now, to bring that in front of the board. Because I think the work that we're doing, not only relating to student-based budgeting, but the work that we're doing in terms of school design, I think could help us be a little bit more strategic around how we create, um, free up more resources to allow for more assistant principals or allow for more support within our schools. Uh, and I, I, I don't wanna just throw resources at it. I think I'd really love to just provide a plan with the academic team, uh, in terms of what that could look like, um, as well.
So, um, thank you for that. And maybe next year for the budget, you present everything and then allow the board enough time to where we can decide, uh, what is a priority to go inside the budget. But at least we'll know everything that's needed and allow the board, um, to decide, you know, what's, what's, what's a priority, um, you know, for us. And that way, we'll have enough time.
Happy to.
I, I tend to agree with Board Member Love on that point. Uh, my comments were geared toward the timing for this year. But the issue with the assistant principals for the smaller schools with smaller population has come up in my discussions. And I think that we really need to look at, for as a budget investment and an ask from the county commission, uh, changing that formula to more, uh, richer formula. Uh, because we know that even though you're, the, the current formula doesn't say you qualify, we know that there is a need there. I've, I had one principal who, who said that i- it was a matter of, well, basically, she was ready to quit because she said she understood the formula. She took on that responsibility, but it was just too much. Uh, hopefully my comments, she didn't retire. But, but it's, it's an issue, uh, even if they don't have a full-time one, maybe a part-time one that would cover two to three schools. But I do think the, the, the assistant principal formula, I personally don't think any school should be left without some support from an assistant principal, whether it be a part-time or a full-time. Uh, the, the money, there is a surplus, so I'm not even looking at general fund for this type of thing. There's a surplus, um, we can ask the county commission for it. And if we really feel that, uh, if we are turned down and we really feel it, then I think we talk about surplus and what we do with that. Uh, but, um, that's how I feel about that. And I do agree with Ms. Love, so, um, I am a shopper. Put it in the, let's see what we wanna put in the basket. Let's put all the items out there and see what we want to. Uh, you all will have a list of your recommendations and I would expect that aside that list, there will be things that you think are worthy but are not included in your list. And then the board would be able to look at that list of worthy things that are not an ask and question why and, and make a decision if we want to push forward on that. So that's what I would like to see.
Support, Board Member Jones, absolutely. So what we can do is, one, we can see what, um, how we could be more generous in terms of the AP. So you guys have that number before approving the budget and see whether the board wants to include that as part of the ask. And we'll do, next year, we'll do a better job. I think this year, what we attempted to do with the list of a hundred and twenty million was to kind of say, here is all of the needs. And then from that list of a hundred and twenty million dollars, let's prioritize. Um, but again, you know, there's always room for improvement, so we can do a better job of that.
I think you should. What, what the only, uh, step further from that, I would say, whatever is, does not make that priority list, that needs to be really front and center to the board. And, and, uh, and I know we, we don't tend to be as engaged in the budget process from beginning to end.
Yeah.
But a push out there, a specific meeting to talk about, these are the things and this is the list. And, uh, you know, so we can really have that conversation. And I know it's a timing issue and it may not be this year, but I look forward to that next year. Board member Caldwell has welcomed me back. I'm gonna give you a third chance.
So, so I appreciate it, but you did, you did let her add some, and, you know, um, but I, I, one of the reasons I asked you to come up with ideas, so it wasn't throwing money at things. Uh, um, I would never suggest that we throw money at something. And so, in, in trying to be respectful to you and, and the administration, you know, you've admitted that you know there are more things that we need. And so if it's a matter of, I know that we talked originally that even if we got an approval that we, you know, early on, when y'all were talking about bringing the budget early, that, that it's not approved finally until June third. And, and we, and I was told then that we could always come back and add, add something to it. So I'm not trying to create work for people, but, but, um, and, and I'm willing to work with you in terms of how y'all go about it, to, to do it, so it's not an onerous thing. But some of those things, I, I, um, that we just discussed, I don't think would require a lot of time, effort or work. And, and if it's, and if it's an accounting issue or that the functions of the, of, of our accounting system don't work, I, I, I'm sensitive to that because I know we started out with a mainframe, IBM mainframe computers and still had it until two or three years ago. But there would seem to be, there's some workaround i- i- if you, if it's, if it's, you know, asking too much in terms of y'all's time.
No, I, I think there's two, two layers and I, I just wanna be candid with the board. I mean, you know, in terms of adding positions, we, we can definitely identify the number. But then there's, there's also the work in terms of just the, the strategy piece as well and in terms of how it works out. So there might be a case where it actually doesn't require much additional, um, resources to have an AP. But that requires months of work to do. And that, that, that's the part I'm asking, I was asking for more time. I'm not saying, or it may require resources. I don't know if it'll require the full amount or it will require some of it. I, I do agree with the recommendation that we can, we can make it a part of the ask. But, um, I would like more time to work with the academics team to actually figure out how are we currently using our resources overall for the district? And how can we crew, free up some resources to actually create spaces and places where we need to invest more?
And I think that Mr. Johnson and his team, the last couple of years have done masterful jobs of really managing the budget. And when they see there are areas that people aren't spending in, we take it back and bring it back to the board in form of budget amendment and changes. So, um, you know, I, I, but I wanna be clear what our homework is. And, you know, we certainly, you know, will take direction for the board. But I know the public's listening and, I mean, so we've had this thing put together since probably March. I mean, so I think that Lynn's concern is just having, you know, because we have to go before the commission next Wednesday, you know, I don't want to get in a situation where we're down there and then, hey, we had that time, we know all this. But notwithstanding that, it seems like the homework is, we're gonna go back, we're gonna add the, uh, textbooks into the budget for next year, the science textbooks, which we all agree we need. Make that a part of the gap. And then we're gonna also go back and, and, and look at the numbers and maybe get some feedback from some principals and see, you know, what's a better split as opposed to that five fifty or six fifty. Because I don't even know, you know, if, if you start talking about thirty more APs, you know, that's probably manageable anyway. So, so we'll do that. And, but then I think finally, just all of those, uh, we'll go back and spend some time tomorrow around some of the investments that almost made the cut, you know, and see if there are ones there that, that we really feel really strongly about after we debated them and put that back up. So I'm, I think Lynn's concern and my concern is just that, so we'll approve this Tuesday. We've gotta be at the county commission at nine on Wednesday. And, you know, I can hear them now. We didn't know, we hadn't heard, we didn't, and, and then, and then it gets, yeah, then it gets further down the line, um, so...
All right, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We'll look forward to that, uh, discussion continuing next week with the full board. Seven point one eight, um, FY two thousand and nineteen, operating budget discussion.
Yeah, so we, I think we admitted that to the capital. And I think this is an area too, where we'd like to be aggressive as well. So, uh, I think that after the last facilities committee, there was somewhere around, what was it then? Close to ninety million dollars?
That's, that's correct.
Eighty-two million dollars that the board, um, wanted to ask for in terms of capital. So we're prepared to make that ask, but what we're gonna do between now and then for the board's approval is kind of rank those, because we, assuming that the county doesn't fund the whole thing, if they come back and say, rank the projects, we wanna be able to say to them, these are the priority. But, I mean, I think that, um, given the fact that we have a half a billion dollars in deferred maintenance, I mean, the eighty-two million dollars really still just a drop in the bucket.
So, for clarity in terms of the item we're discussing, operating budget and capital project requests, is that the same thing?
No, that, that should have, that should have been replaced earlier with, um, FY two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, capital... No, that, that should have, that should have been replaced earlier with, um, FY two thousand eighteen, nineteen capital, um, requests.
So when I announced FY nineteen operating budget discussion, that was an error. That should not have, that should have been taken off.
That's right.
So seven point one eight should be, uh, staff action item two thousand eighteen, nineteen capital projects request, which we just discussed.
That's right.
Alright.
And then seventeen should have been two thousand eighteen, nineteen proposed budget approval.
Right, I announced that. So I guess the one that's on here was just removed. The operating budget discussion, that's no longer on the agenda. Is that correct?
I think we changed it at the beginning. Just amended it.
I do think. Seven point one nine, we'll move that, uh, seven point one eight, uh, to, I don't know if it's, is it consent? It's going to be action?
Well, I, I guess we want to make sure that the board is comfortable with the eighty-two million.
So we'll do action.
And, and I guess sort of-
Superintendent, I need to clarify something. So you had referenced that the board discussed the capital ask in the last ad hoc meeting and on February, uh, on May first, we talked about the list. At that time, the list was eighty-two million. At the request of the board, we went back and made changes to that list to reflect moving from a temporary, um, building model to, you know, a, a traditional structure for the replacement of portables. So we went back, we, we massaged the data, reestimated, so Lynn has the, the current ask is actually ninety million, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand because we had to adjust it to reflect the input from the board that we received on May first. I just wanted to clarify that.
Board Member Caldwell.
So, uh, I would just add that, um, you know, um, if, you know, my understanding is that if we want to, um, reassign the fund balance during the course of the year after we've had our initial budget proved, we can do that at any time going down to the, to the county commission, correct?
I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. I know you've got a million things going and, and the chatter and stuff. So, so, you know, we don't, you know, in terms of spending down fund balance, we can go back to the county commission at any time. We don't have to do it in this request. So I'm trying to think of ways I can accommodate you. So if in terms of the, if it's more important to, it's obviously more important to get the recurring money. So I would, then I would say, I'm fine waiting until a later time this year to look at one-time expenses that maybe don't get approved and then we'll be in a better position to see how much of those things that we can do. So I'm trying, trying to work with you.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's correct. Board Member Caldwell and, uh, remember similar to, to last year, the board actually assigned, um, did a resolution to actually assign fund balance and that typically happens around a year and close, um, in August. So we, we're going to continue that, that process.
Alright.
Uh, where the board will approve a resolution for the assignment of the fund balance.
Right, I, I, I figured that was a process, but having been married thirty-six years, I don't, I don't, I don't presume I know what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Board Member Love.
So with this, um, list right here, um, how many, and you can send it to me in an email, but how many of these are new requests? Um, and are there any requests from other schools that are over four years old? Because I've, I've, I, I know of some schools that have had different requests, um, since I became a board member. So you can send me an email how all of these were prioritized and also, um, are there any schools that we need to add? Because Superintendent, I know that we had to close several schools early because of the air. So are there any schools, um, that we need to add because the, uh, air is not working correctly?
So I think Ms. Love, that if you recall, we did a couple of months ago, a big, the board approved a big spend and do a lot of HVAC and it's going to happen over summer, so most of the schools we're having trouble are on that list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's true.
Okay, that, um-
But I, I do just, Madam Chair, just want to make, just want to make sure that our direction on this is clear because it's our intention to just do a resolution asking for the ninety-plus million pursuant to the facilities meeting. And if the board approves it, we'll just present that to the county as our, what our ask is for this year's, for next year's capital budget.
That's my understanding. The, the list is in board docs, right? And so I would assume that if any board member has a problem or wants to address a particular item, it would be done in time to, before the resolution is drafted for next week. Is that, okay. So we'll mo- move this, I guess, to action item because there may be some changes. Seven point one nine, central nutrition, nutrition center demolition project. That's a recommendation to, uh, in the amount of seven hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and sixty cents to demolish the central nutrition kitchen and I'll preface that with, is that the, also the attached building that we were leasing?
Yes, ma'am.
That's just the warehouse portion. Yep, we're trying to preserve that, that, um, little building behind that we used to lease and also the freezer, uh, as well.
I don't see any lights for this item. We'll move that to the consent agenda. Seven point two zero, youth violence intervention initiatives. I think there are several, uh, a number that, at different prices, uh, that are on the, uh, recommendation. I would just, I, I guess a couple of things in reading those, I, it's always the data and how we monitor and are we prepared to have an infrastructure to monitor to make sure of the effectiveness. So I'm not, I'm not, uh, against it, but how we monitor it, uh, do, will we thought about a plan for that? Uh, in terms of data, because the board is going to ask the performance, um, standards and, and what we've looked at over the course of years.
So I know that we talked about this, Madam Chair, today. I think the answer is yes, but I want to also ask Brad and his team, you know, to, um, work with Chief to have some clear accountability measures and report out on those um, quarterly, if that works for the board. I mean, I know Chief asks kind of the, the way they're measuring, but I, I, I agree with you, Ms. Jones. I think that, and just for sort of, so the listening public knows, um, we submitted, we had RFP process uh, for, um, community partners to support us in, uh, this work and they responded and we went through and evaluated. And so we're, uh, entering contracts with different people to help us with, um, uh, support our youth. And I agree, Ms. Jones, it needs to be before these things can be renewed. We need to have data on their effectiveness. And I would just ask Brad and his team to figure out a clear way to, uh, measure that effectiveness and then also report out to the board on, uh, how the partners are doing.
And I guess I, I said various, but to, to be specific, Heal the Hood, Memphis Bears contract, So What contract, More Hugs Than Slugs, Damascus Road, Life Change in, in Revised, Olympic Career Staffing and so, uh, Sopit One. Those are the contracts. Board Member Caldwell.
You know, I always think it's good to have metrics on the front end and, you know, I think to make sure to, to board members, uh, or Acting Chair Jones is in, in your, uh, comments Superintendent, that, that if there's a way to, to have some of this in the contract that we sign with people, um, I think that would be helpful both to them and to us, so we can, uh, you know, make sure we're, you know, that we're having the effects we want to have.
Board Member Love.
So Superintendent, I do agree with, uh, what the Board Member Jones and Board Member Caldwell stated. Um, that I do think a metric needs to be put in the contract, but also making sure that, um, before we place, uh, these providers in the schools, making sure that the principal states what they need. Because, you know, I'm reading this, um, uh, but if we don't know what the principal needs, um, you know, sometimes we do a disservice to our schools and our, um, you know, our principals and our students. But also, um, even with the data, so what's already in that school? Um, because a lot of times we have a lot of people touching one child, but we see no improvement in the child. So what's already in the school, um, what is it that the principal needs? It doesn't matter what they say they can do. What is it that the principal needs? And if they can't do their job, then unfortunately, you know, we, we can't, we can't help you in here. But also making sure that, um, because I, I didn't see one about, um, assisting our students with trauma. Um, and I know that a lot of our children have trauma, um, they come to school with trauma. So, um, you know, maybe I overlooked it, but, uh, but I didn't see anything with that. But just making sure that the data is there, um, and each one of our children who are being touched, who else are they being touched by? Um, so that the data can actually be accurate data.
Thank you, Board Member. Um, seeing no lights, we'll move that to the consent agenda. Um, I'm trying to determine, seven point two one, has that been deleted? It's on my agenda, electronic agenda, seven point two one, but it doesn't have- Okay. A recommendation for the Chevy County Board of Education to approve the additional funds in the amount of eighty-nine thousand and seven, eighty and seven dollars to support the due diligence, environmental work and ADA review at the Bayer campus for a total contract value of one hundred seventy-four thousand and three dollars with Fisher and Arnold. Their briefing documents attached. I know it was, uh, added, uh, the last minute, but I'll entertain lights. Questions? No lights, no questions. We'll move that to the consent agenda for next week. Uh, that's seven point two one. Eight, and then we're now in section eight, the board items. Number eight point one is proposed policy revisions. Uh, Board Members, this is the first reading, so we will not, uh, be voting on these next week. I think we also have reviewed these during committee, did we not? So if there are, I'll entertain any lights at this time. Seeing none, we'll move these policies to the consent agenda, well, to the- Is it? It doesn't get adopted. It doesn't go to the consent, consent agenda. We'll move it forward, uh, the action item next week. Eight point two is a resolution approving the Chevy County School Board members' strategic funding allocation for May two thousand eighteen. I've been provided with the document. I'm instructed that I'm to read this. This is a, the, whereas the Chevy County Board members' strategic school fund allocations allow board members with guidance from school principals and SCS administration to address the unique needs of individual schools. And whereas the Chevy County Board of Education approves the respective board members' strategic allocations for the following projects in fiscal year seventeen eighteen and, uh, as it relates to Board Chair Avent, the pro- proposed projects, Cummins K eight optional school, STEM and optional booth, seven thousand, Riverview K eight school, Riverview Beautification Project, five thousand, West Haven Elementary School, school to home connection, clear lines of communication, seventeen thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars, John P. Freeman Optional School, Teachers' Lounge, Parent Center Remodel, eight thousand, Whitehaven Elementary School, STEM Park, six thousand, Hickory Ridge Middle School, appreciation and incentive for completing Evidence to Success Youth Experiment, Experience Survey, two thousand five, Kirby High School, appreciation and incentive for completing Evidence to Success Youth Experience Survey, a thousand four, Bogota T. Washington for completing this incentive for the same experience survey, one thousand one hundred three. So, the only thing I would ask, uh, staff for a flow, if you would put all board members in one category, they're flowing from front to back, back and forth, and this is real problematic. So if we could come up a way to have all of it in a row and then pick up on the next one, that would be great. So Riley Egypt, uh, Chair Avent still, Riley Egypt High School, appreciation and incentive for completing the Evidence to Success Youth Experience Survey, one thousand three hundred fifty, for a total of forty-eight thousand, seventy dollars, remaining allocation is five hundred and thirty-six dollars. Okay, that completes Board Member Avent. So then I'll go back to the other side. Board Member Woods, project, Whitehaven High, White Station High School Pocket Park, eight thousand, Craigmont High School Planetarium, twenty-five hundred, and I appreciate, uh, that, uh, donation. Uh, just for the record, Board Member Love has already made a fifteen hundred donation and, and not being ashamed to solicit those who have, are struggling with their remaining allotment, I would welcome donations towards the Craigmont, Craigmont Planetarium, which would not only be for Craigmont, but I anticipate, uh, once it's fully restored, would be of, uh, great educational uh, use by a number of schools in the district. So that's my pitch for, uh, Craigmont's Planetarium. And, uh, Board Member Woods is remaining, okay, remaining, that's a total of ten thousand, five hundred, remaining allocation total, seven thousand, two hundred seventy-one. Vice Chair Loves, allocation, Westside Elementary School, summer recruitment, five thousand, a total of five thousand, remaining allocation, twenty-two thousand dollars. Board Member McCormick's, uh, projects, Cordova High School, auditorium cafeteria AV renovation, sixty-one thousand, one hundred eighty-six, for a total of sixty-one thousand, one hundred eighty-six, remaining allocation total, thirty-three, eight, one, four. Board Member Jones, Kingsbury Library Furniture, twenty-six thousand, nine hundred, a total of twenty-six thousand, nine hundred. Board Member Cornell, Wooddale High School, appreciation and incentive for completing X, X Evidence to Success Youth Experience Survey, one thousand two hundred and forty-three, for a total of one thousand two hundred and forty-three, remaining allocation, sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven. I'm definitely going to approach him. Board Member Biff's, District Seven Leadership Recognition, thirty-five hundred, total of thirty-five hundred, remaining allocation, seven thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars. Board Member Caldwell, Peabody Elementary Beautification Project Irrigation, five hundred dollars, total of five hundred, remaining allocation, four thousand, nine hundred, eighty-five dollars. I think that completes the resolution for May two thousand eighteen. Board Member Caldwell.
So I'd just like to compliment, um, the board office and whoever else has been involved in, in adapting this process. I think it's getting a lot better. And then the only other thing I would ask you, and you don't have to answer me right now, but, um, if you'd send me a text message or an email, you know, the next day or so, um, preferably tomorrow, if that four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five is affirmed, because I had some things that had to have additional funds and I just want to make sure that that's, that if I want to do something with that, I, I can. Alright, since, since we have several people up here asking.
Board Member Love.
Um, I also thought I had my money spent down, um, to three thousand dollars. So, um, we can look at that tomorrow. And if it is Commissioner Jones, I'll give you three thousand dollars for Craigmont High School.
Thank you. So that's, uh, eight point two. I guess that'll go on the action item because obviously there'll be some revisions for next week. Eight point three is the school board meeting schedule. I think we've clarified the only question I had. I've sent a, a request to find out when Day on the Hill was and you did and you've adjusted it for that already and reflected in the schedule. Any other, uh, comments or questions? So is there, I saw, uh, did I see where we need to make a choice about a, a date? Or had that choice already been made in September? Or had that choice already been made in September? Has the calendar already been just adjusted, and that is, and that's reflected in it?
Yes, it's already been adjusted.
Okay, so it's already been adjusted?
For September, yes.
I don't see any lights, are there any, if not, we'll move this calendar forward next week. Again, consent agenda. That is eight point, uh, three, so eight point four is the Head Start Cost of Living Adjustment, a COLA. So, board members, first, for some context, I, I participate, I attended the, um, Policy Council Meeting last Thursday, and also was asked by the chair in her stead to, uh, take part in a conference call, uh, this week. Out of that, uh, information, uh, was given in terms of this, uh, COLA request that's available. I had a number of questions, but the reason that I asked that it be put forward on tonight at the last minute was because whatever our decision is that, that's going to be made, there's a June eighteenth deadline. If we did not have it on this month for discussion and decision, whatever the outcome, we would've either, uh, just passed on it or had to ma, have a special call in June. So, I pushed that it be, uh, fast-tracked to be on the, the agenda because we are the, um, overseers of the grant as a board, and I think this is a conversation we need to have. Some questions I had, number one was, I think the amount of proposed COLA is two point six, so in the budget, and I asked you earlier, superintendent, is there a proposal for other employees', uh, increase?
Yes, there is.
And what is, what is that amount?
So, that amount is, um, two, uh, two percent.
Okay. So, um, then I support this request, I, I would think that if the grant is going to, then this would supplant what we would need to do for the grant employees. If we approved this, uh, the grant would then take over what we were intending to spend before this came along. Is that correct?
That is correct. And typically for grants, uh, we, we typically use grant funds for their salary increases.
Okay.
So, yes.
Right, and, uh, another reason I support it, I, I know that, uh, it's a, a point six higher, but, uh, and the board, I guess, could weigh in on that, but I do know that grant employees are not permanent employees. They do take on a certain amount of risk that other employments do not, employees do not have in terms of when grants expire and their continued employment. And, um, we are in the midst of starting our, uh, application again. Uh, we don't know what that outcome is going to be, it could be that these employees might not be employed at the end of that grant, whereas regular district employees, whether they get the increase or not, they pretty much are guaranteed employment. So, I took that into consideration, but out, uh, on the floor for discussion.
I'm sorry, Ms. Jones, just to clarify, uh, five points. So, one, the, the COLA actually takes in, in place January first of two thousand and eighteen. So, there's a, a retro component to the COLA, even if we approve it in June, it'll go back to January first of two thousand and eighteen. And the second, um, to your point in terms of, of supplementing versus supplanting, so, um, those who, those employees that were a part of the increase for the living wage, um, that was done across all of our employees, including Head Start as well, they would also see some benefit from the, you know, having their salary increased to fifteen dollars per hour.
Okay, I think I understood what you said. We've already done that. Is this gonna be an addition, or are we going to go back and just use the grant funds?
Yes, so that, that, and that's the decision point.
For, for the board?
Yes.
So, I think, I guess we need some discussion, I support it, but that's a discussion, I guess, and if you all could bring a recommendation, that would be great. And I don't see any other lights, so next week, we'll look forward to, uh, a recommendation of, because there's a retro and because of the situation, how we should handle that to be fair and equitable to employees across the district. We'll put that on the action item for next week. And we'll move forward to, uh, eight point five, a amended resolution. I did not, I need to go back. A resolution to amend Chevy County Board Member's Strategic School Funding Allocation dating back to February. Whereas the Chevy County Board Member's Strategic School Fund allocations allow board members with guidance from school principals and SCS administration to address the unique needs of individual schools. And whereas the Chevy County Board of Education approves the respective board members' strategic allocations for the following projects in fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, eighteen. Okay, so, um, Ms. Goins has saved me. Where is it? Ms. Goins has saved me, I don't need to read this six-page document. So, it is a recommendation that the Chevy County Board of Education amends the resolution of the Chevy County Board Members' Strategic School Funds Allocation Program, February two thousand and eighteen, adopted on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, regarding board strategic allocation by striking the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for Craigmont High School and replacing it with ninety-one thousand, by striking one hundred thousand for the total and replacing the ninety with ninety-one thousand, by striking twenty-five thousand for the remaining allocation and total and replacing with thirty-four thousand. And that is the recommendation, and as I explained earlier, board members were generous, and they, uh, allocated some of their funds, and that's backing up the amount. And to be, uh, totally honest, I, I overspent my allotment. I was trying to do so much good. So, that's the recommendation, any lights? The total amount is ninety-nine thousand, so, uh, what I, they, I've worked it out by shorting other schools, what I was gonna do. Uh, there was a seventeen thousand gap, and, uh, what I did was, I went back to Kingsbury, and I needed thirty-eight, and I just decided to give them half and then try to make that up out of next year's allegation. Only because I shorted another school. No, no, uh, we can, no, we can, we can, uh, for, we can negotiate that, thank you. There being more, no further business before this board, this meeting is adjourned?
Yeah, it was the seventeen thousand, I do the numbers, 'cause what I did was back garden. I see, I know, Kingsbury needed library and furniture, and they told me it was twenty-something thousand, but it ended up being thirty-five, and the principal said, "We really need it, 'cause the high school and the middle school use that library." And so, I said, "Well, I'll find out what that gap is, 'cause that's what I need to make up in order to not short Kingsbury this year." Yeah, and then what I would do is, and then what I would do is-